The Stab it Mudder is the traditional hymn to sing on Holy Saturday.
Yes.
So, we watched Pergalase's Stab it Mudder on YouTube.
Oh, yeah, isn't it wonderful to see all the fantastic things that people have been doing? Free music that they've been arranging for people to help them through this time. I think it was the cast of Hamilton that was out on Friday night.
Oh.
Doing a sing-along so that anybody could pop in and, you know, and sing with the original cast. But yeah, it's been interesting to see how people have been generous with their talents. Well, let's see, I'm trying to stream us to Facebook, but the last three services I've had a heck of a time. It just times out. And so I think I need to... Oh, there he is.
There he is. I don't know if he can hear us, but...
Yeah, it says connecting to audio.
There we go.
There he is.
Long time.
No problem. Oh my goodness. Well, shall we begin with a prayer? The Lord be with you.
And also with you.
Let us pray. Almighty and everlasting God, we thank you for your holy word. And this opportunity to read Mark, learn, and inwardly digest those holy, holy words that you have sought to give to us thousands of years down the road from when they were inspired. And so, Jesus, we ask your Holy Spirit, who is alive and working, to open our hearts anew. Inspire us. May we be channels of your love through the inspiration of your word. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. Oh, right. So, we are on, as you remember, we are on... We're studying the book of First Corinthians, and this is one of several letters that we understand that Paul sent to the church in Corinth. And I want to pull up this map just to remind us all of what it is we're looking at. This is a map of kind of the general area. As you can see, let's, let me move my cursor here. Here's Jerusalem down here, and this is where it all started. And Paul was headed to Damascus, which we know is in Syria, right? So, he was headed north. And he was stricken from his horse. He was going to persecute the Christians. And lo and behold, Jesus came to him and said, "Paul, Saul, why are you persecuting me?" And struck him from the horse, and he went over blind. And when he, when he got up, he was told to go to a certain town, to a certain place, and his sight was restored. And lo and behold, he had the most dramatic conversion story that I think any of us have ever heard. And from there, he became just as vehemently sold on the idea of Jesus as he had been vehemently opposed to it previous to his conversion. And so, he was then anointed by the Spirit to be, of all things, a missionary to the Gentiles. So, Paul, of course, popped by Jewish places in what we call the diaspora. And the diaspora are those gatherings of Jews that are not in Jerusalem. Okay? So, the diaspora would be when you head up to very, very Gentile area like Asia Minor right here, which of course we now know as Turkey. And he founded these churches. He spent some time in Ephesus, in Colossa. Colossa, we know from studying the book of Colossians together, is really nothing but barely a truck stop today. But at the time was a fairly hustle-bustle place. Ephesus is right on the coast, and that was an important city at the time of Paul. The Romans had invested a lot of money in it, and it became kind of a hub for a lot of his missionary activity. We know he went to Corinth probably a couple of times. He had correspondence with the church in Corinth. And as we, as we, let's see, move to another map of Corinth here, which I want to kind of zoom in on. I wanted to show you, here's Rome up here in the top left-hand corner. And then Thessalonica, also where he traveled, Philippi. So, we get an idea, this area is now Turkey. Greece is of course still there. Crete is still there. Cyprus is still there. But we would call this whole area of what's termed Galatia as that would be Turkey now. And as I switch maps here to show you a closer map of Greece, and Athens, you can see right there. And then you can see, in order to travel from Athens to Italy, which would have been really big, or from any place here, stopping in Athens, you had a long 202-mile trek around the bottom. Now, if you decided instead to go through the Isthmus, which is four and a half miles from here to here, then that's what Corinth was built around, is people in boats. It was just a lot safer because this was a really treacherous place, as we talked about last time, to take your boat. So, you can go across here four and a half miles, and then Corinth becomes a waystation, if you will, for a lot of trade. And Corinth then becomes a very important city geographically. What would happen there? Sorry about that. Not sure what happened there. I don't know if I can go backwards. Oh, there we go. Becomes a very important port geographically. And as we studied last time, the Greeks saw it as very important, and they, let's see. The town was sacked for about 100 years, and it was rebuilt by the Romans in about the year 50 B.C. Again, because it was just strategic, okay? It was also the home of the Olympics, which was of course, you know, a huge event there. But there was a second event that was second in size that was housed there also. And so, it became, as I say, it was, it was an important trading place. And what happened in terms of Paul's work there is he, you know, he ran into church in trouble. And we're going to read in this letter about the troubles that they battled. The, because of the waystation that Corinth was, it garnered a reputation of being a place of, shall we say, you know, decadent living. So, that there was even, as we talked about last time, if one was called a Corinthian, it meant one was kind of a drunken rabble-rouser. So, it had this reputation of being a place, you know, maybe we call it a big old college town, you know, these days. So, and Paul is going to address that in his letter. You know, a big, you know, relatively big city for the time, relatively prosperous, and with that comes this decadence. And so, Paul is going to address that. I just always like to begin with a little bit of a roadmap to show where we are here. We are on the second chapter now of First Corinthians. And to review a little bit, I've got a couple of translations that I wanted us to, to look at because especially the second chapter, it's not all, it's not an easy reading. It's, it doesn't really... Yeah, it doesn't really lend itself to understanding right off the bat. So, we're, we're going to read it in the New Revised Standard Version. And just as a reminder, y'all remember the King James Version, right? This was in about, I want to say, I want to say it was the 16, late 1600s when King James was asked to produce a, an English version that would update the regular versions. Now, we know when Henry VIII... One thing you can take, thank the Episcopal Church for, the Anglican Church, is we translated the Bible in English. Because before then, it was only in Latin, right? And then before then, it was in Greek and in Hebrew. And so, with that reformation, Henry had it translated. Certainly, the first people who translated into English were, were what we might call evangelicals. And Henry was much more Catholic. So, those people, Matthew, what's his name, Pat, those early translators, Tyndale? Some of these early, they died. They were killed. Their translations were considered, wait a minute, you can't mess with this. It's got to stay in Latin. So, the earliest English versions were actually illegal. But once the reformation happened, and it was clear that we were now going to have the Bible in English, we kind of dug up some of those, said, "We're sorry for killing you," and then went ahead and started using them. And what we found at the time of King James was that there was need for a really good English translation that was updated. And he did a really interesting thing. He took, he put together a whole, you know, Bibles are translated by boards of people. It's not just like one person. We will, the rendering we will look at today that makes it really easy to read is by a guy named, named, it'll come to me in a second, but he did what we might call a paraphrase. And so, that would be a very wise scholar looking at it being, you know, relatively well-educated in Hebrew and Greek, and kind of saying, "This is kind of what it means." Now, it's much easier for us to do a paraphrase today because we got, we've got all the tools. I mean, you can, you know, you can get pictures of these unseals, these original manuscripts on the internet. And, you know, you don't have to go to, because the earliest fragments of the Bible we have are scattered around the world. You've got to go to museums in Germany, and in England, and in Rome, and all, you know, they're scattered all over the place. But now, you can get access to them on the internet, which of course, it was invented by scientists and professors for this reason, to share information. And you can do a relatively, you know, interesting translation or paraphrase, which is what we'll look at. But to get a translation, you have a translation board. And you have these professors working on Mark, you have those working on John, and da-da-da-da. And so, the, what King James did is he put together this board of translators, and he included in them not just wise linguists, he included poets and writers. So, that you get this King James translation, which has, "Yea, though I walk through the valley of shadow of death, I shall fear no evil." And you get these wonderfully poetic, you know, ways of expression at a time when Shakespeare, you know, this preceded Shakespeare, but you know, there's, there's a real linguistic history, lineage in the English language in England. And so, this King James Version has endured, and it became what the Church of England calls the Authorized Version, or the AV. Okay? Well, over the years, because the church and language changed, the church has seen fit to continue to translate the Bible. And so, the New Revised Standard Version is actually in the lineage of the King James Version. So, when you look at how this mentality went into translating the Bible, right now, in the English language, there are 500 different renderings. Okay? So, there's no shortage of Bibles. And I always recommend to people, when they say, "Which version should I get?", I say, "Get all of them." You know, because we're human, and none of them is going to be perfect. But the New Revised Standard Version does take into account the lineage of the King James Version, which of course is by far the best-selling, best-known English language version of the Scripture. But in our day and age, we have just access to a little bit more information than they did back then. People often say, "Oh, you know, the Bible, it's, it's like playing that game Telephone." And you know, by the time you get done, you get this garbled bit of a mess that's nothing near the original. But actually, the opposite is true. Because right now, we have access to all those notes, or to many of those notes, of previous translators. So, we can actually kind of see, we know more about the culture, we know more about the sociology, and we can see that when Paul, when Jesus said, you know, "All men should come to me", well, we know that he really meant all people, right? He didn't mean just men, right? And so, we want to be conscious of the fact that, you know, this is really what's in the original meaning of the text. And the NRSV will do that. You know, people who are, for some reason, sold on the fact that the King James Bible is, was the one Jesus used, right? Which came 1,500 years after Jesus. You know, we, I think, always have to be, you know, using the, you know, the Anglican, the Episcopal tri post of what do we base our faith on? Scripture, tradition, and reason, right? We really need to use reason here and say, "Well, we know that we evolve. We know that we grow. We know that language changes. And how do we keep up with it?" We see that all the time, and so, that's how we want to make sure our faith is new and vibrant as it is. But keeping that in mind, Eugene Peterson is the name of the man who wrote The Message, which is the rendering that we're going to look at for this particular passage. But in First, in the New Revised Standard Version, I'll share my page again here to talk a little bit about what we did last week. This is the salutation that Paul will give, called to be an apostle of Christ by the will of God and our brother Sosthenes. We remember that Paul is always going to remind people of the fact that he is called by Jesus as an apostle. It's hard for you and I to think we're apostles because we didn't really walk with Jesus. And Paul is going to say that because he had this experience on the horse in Damascus, and he quote-unquote "saw Jesus", that that is something that he now equates with Matthew, you know, Matthew, Mark, with all the apostles who are going to have walked with him, James, John, Peter, et cetera. He's going to claim apostleship because of that. And notice he includes this, "Paul, an apostle of Christ Jesus by the will of God and our brother Sosthenes." We looked at Sosthenes last week and what role he had played in the church in Corinth. And he, he was a Jewish temple member, if not leader. And so, he, you know, many theologians think he was like the writer of this letter, that Paul dictated it, and Sosthenes was the one who kind of wrote it down. We know that Paul used what's called an amuletsis, or a secretary, to, I have a story about that. Okay, sorry, my wife held up some seaweed. And I'm sure you all have at your house. So, so Paul used these secretaries. We know that in order for you and me to kind of write a letter, we just need to get our laptop and use Microsoft Word, and boom, 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 we're done. Paul probably dictated, probably to this amuletsis, the whole process of doing this. You know, if you look, look at it in financial terms, in order to get the paper, to get the ink, to get the person to write it down, would have cost several thousand dollars. You know, it would have been a process. It would have taken time. And imagine if the guy, as I think I've mentioned to you, the, well, let's see, let me see, I want to pull something up for you and share it with you here. Let's see. Okay. Here. Okay. Let's see here. There we go. Okay. This is, I, you know, the earliest bits of Scripture that you and, that you and I have are, are actually several hundred years old. We do not have the original Bible. And when you look at manuscripts, this is what you tend to look at. Okay? This would be a fragment. Really finding whole books, you have to go pretty late, like maybe the year 400 or 500 to find a complete book. The oldest stuff we have that might date back to, you know, the year 100 or 200 is going to look like this. As you can note, it was very valuable, a paper, and animal skins and papyrus were valuable. So, there are no spaces between the words, right? I mean, you only had so much... I'm sorry?
No periods, there were commas.
Yeah, exactly. No periods, no commas. This is actually a pretty good version here because, I mean, I can make out, you know, some of these Greek words from my, and it's written in what's called Koiné Greek. There's Classical Greek, and there's Koiné Greek. And Koiné Greek was the common Greek versus Classical that was also around at the time. But this was not written in, you know, like the works of Homer, and some of these that would have been Classical Greek. It was written for the common person. And of course, just a small minority of people could even read. But more would have been able to read Common Greek than they would have been able to read Classical Greek. So, so this is what we talk about when we talk about, you know, what, what the Scripture is going to look like and what, you know, either on animal skin or papyrus, and in a desert area. So, once you put these things in a scroll, it's going to last a while. You know, these, these, you know, the Dead Sea Scrolls discovered in 1949 went back, what, almost 2,000 years, right? And those were very well-preserved. So, you know, it's amazing. So, what happened to those first copies? You know, Paul's original letter written in probably the year 54 or 55, First, Second, First and Second Corinthians, right? About the year 55, where's that letter? Why do we only have a copy that dates maybe to 150? What happened to those copies in the first 100 years? Probably worn out, right? Passed on, church to church, copied from church to church, and, and probably, probably worn out. And so, we have to keep in mind that this is, you know, we study the Word of God, but it's always the Word of God through frail humans. And we do the best we can to be, you know, have integrity towards the text. And also understand that, I mean, this is the best-selling book of all time. I mean, there is no book that even touches, you know, look at the New York Times list, and they just can't keep putting the Bible up there. Because people keep buying it, people keep reading it. And it's because somehow God speaks to us through it. And, and so, you know, this is, I think we're wise to always remind ourselves of how lucky we are, how the Spirit has moved to get us that original Scripture, which a lot of the, you know, a lot of your textual experts will say, what we have today in our Bible is, is, is probably 95, 98% correct in terms of the best guesses they can have as to what it originally said. So, we want to be really wise to that. As we always study when we do the resurrection according to Mark, this year was Matthew. Mark's is, ends very dodgy. I mean, the original ending of Mark in that the Gospel of Mark, the oldest copies we have, have a very abrupt ending. It says, "They went to the tomb, and it was empty, and they ran away scared." Full stop. I mean, you know, that's the oldest one we have. And so, we do have newer versions that have this wonderful resurrection story. But, but experts are always quick to say, you know, this is, these are from newer editions. The oldest we have has it stopped there. Now, why is it stopped there? Does that mean in Mark? Who, remember, Mark is our oldest gospel writer. You know, Mark was first, and then Matthew, Luke, and then John. Okay? And why does Mark end so abruptly? Because of a lot of conjectures. Some people say, "Well, you know, it was the last page of the book, and it got ripped off." You know, that's, it's gone. We just don't know. And so, I think we have to be very conscious of how much we're going to take by faith, and how much we're going to really base on what the best evidence, physical evidence is that we have. You know, there are several stories in Scripture that have, you know, not a lot, but a handful that I think of Jesus with the woman in adultery. I mean, that's only in the book of John. A lot of scholars will think that that story was actually, you know, inserted, not one of the, not what would have been in the original, because it's not in the oldest manuscripts. So, we want to be conscious of these things. We want to make sure that we're looking at Scripture not just with the tradition that's handed down to us, but also with reason, and what is science telling us about these things? What are we, I mean, if we have to really take a stand for the gospel, we better feel that this is true, right? So, anyway, back to First Corinthians. So, First Corinthians, we know Paul was helped by Sosthenes. We know that he was writing to the church that is in Corinth. And let me share my screen for you one more time here. That comes to us in verse, in verse, let's see. Verse four says, "I give thanks to my God always for you because of the grace God has given me in Jesus." And remember that those first 10 verses of First Corinthians 1 mentions Jesus Christ 10 times. He just keeps saying, "Jesus Christ, our Lord Jesus Christ." And then he begins to go... One of the reasons I wanted to point out those texts, the, those, the, these original verses to you is because one of the things that we find when we look at this is there, there are no chapter derivations. Not only are there no verses, there are no chapters. Chapters came 1,200, 1,300 years later. Verses came another 100 or 200 years after that. So, it's really not, you know, maybe 600 years ago, this is what everybody read, all right? And very few people could read. So, the idea that we're looking at this text, and we see it all nicely, you know, versed off for us, and with little headings, I think is important for us to realize that the original writer and readers didn't see these as chapters. So, we go to quote-unquote "chapter two", it's just a continuation of what's happening here. And he's talking about divisions in the church. He's talking about Christ and the, and power, and the wisdom of God. And this will, this will be replicated when we talk about Christ, having the mind of Christ, which is how this second chapter ends, by reminding us that we have Christ's mind here. So, as an end-up before we start this chapter, Paul says, "Consider your own call, brothers and sisters." And he reminds the church of the, of the make-up of the church. "Not many of you were wise by human standards. Not many powerful, not many of noble birth." Now, we know some were, because we know the biographies of some of the people Paul mentions, that some were synagogue leaders, governmental leaders, but as Paul reminds them, not many. "Not many of you were wise by human standards." So, from the beginning, the church has been really for the common person, is what he seems to be expressing here. "But God chose what is foolish in the world to shame the wise. God chose what is weak in the world to shame the strong. God chose what is low and despised in the world, things that are not, to reduce to nothing, things that are, so that no one might boast in the presence of Christ. He is the source of your life in Christ Jesus, who became for us wisdom from God, and righteousness, and sanctification, and redemption. All big words. We won't go back into them. In order that, as it is written, let the one who boasts boast in the Lord." So, moving over then to chapter two, and it's not a hugely long chapter. I mean, we've got just about 16 verses here. And why don't we begin, let's see, Barbara, would you begin by reading verses 1 through 5?
Sure. "When I came to you, brothers and sisters, I did not come proclaiming the mystery of God to you in lofty words or wisdom, for I decided to know nothing, oops, nothing among you except Jesus Christ and Him crucified. And I came to you in weakness, and in fear, and in much trembling. My speech and my proclamation were not plausible words of wisdom, but with a demonstration of the Spirit and of power, so that your faith might rest not on human wisdom, but on the power of God."
One, does that say anything to anybody, first of all, in my desk?
I think it shows that he came with his faith, not any human stuff, daily stuff, is what it says to me.
Yeah.
And I think it is credit to God and not credit to himself.
Right.
And that we should depend on what we get from God and not what we have ourselves.
Jane.
Yeah.
Eugene Peterson's version, he said, "I did not try to impress you."
Yeah, this is, this is Eugene Peterson's version right here.
And this, this says humility. He came with humility.
Yeah. Pat, do you want to read this, this translation by Eugene Peterson here, verses 1 through 5?
Okay.
It's on the screen there.
"You'll remember, friends, that when I first came to you to let you in on God's master stroke, I didn't try to impress you with polished speeches and the latest philosophy. I deliberately kept it plain and simple. First, Jesus, who He is, then Jesus and what He did, Jesus crucified. I was unsure of how to go about this and felt totally inadequate. I was scared to death, if you want the truth of it, and so, nothing I said could have impressed you or anyone else. But the message came through anyway. God's Spirit and God's power did it, which made it clear that your faith, life of faith, is a response to God's power, not to some fancy mental or emotional footwork by me or anyone else." His version is, for me, very powerful. The word, "I did not come to impress", and he did everything in a humble and loving way, and he admits he was scared. That, that impressed me.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think what we want to, let's see, that's the New Revised Standard. Here's, here's back to Peterson's version. I think what we want to remember first and foremost from St. Paul is that he was a pastor. He was a pastor looking to pastor at church. He had a pastor's heart. And remember, the pastor is, is of course, can be really fierce to guard, like a shepherd. That's where we get the word, you know, pastoral, taking care of sheep. You're going to guard, but you're going to really love them. You're going to lay down your life for them, to use the analogy. And so, Paul, what we see in his rendition here of, excuse me, in his words here, and again, I'll start with the NRSV. "When I came to you, brothers and sisters, I didn't come proclaiming the mystery of God in lofty words and wisdom. He did not come to impress them. He did not come to hypnotize them. He came trying to do his very best to spread the word of the Lord," right? Verse two says, "For I decided to know nothing among you except Jesus Christ and Him crucified." I tell you, isn't that a great prayer? Wouldn't that be something for each of us to, I mean, if I, if we knew as much about Jesus and Jesus crucified as we knew about, name your favorite hobby, right? To really, you know, I, I know the ins and outs of that. This becomes, you know, I mean, especially for a pastor, for me, as I read this, because Paul is, is really always been a huge mentor, that he really gives up everything to follow Christ. He gives up his, we don't know if he was married or not. He certainly doesn't mention his wife much. I mean, he talks later on about how important it is to be single when you're doing what he does, because then you're, you don't have to take the time you put into a relationship that he can put into work. There's a whole nother side topic on Paul's crazy workaholism, right? He is really taken by this idea in verse two, "I decided to know..." He is really taken by this idea in verse two, I decided to know nothing among you except Jesus Christ and him crucified. Friends, this is the great equalizer. I mean, this is what brings us all together as a family of God. It's we are not here because we vote the same way. We're not here because we make the same amount of money. We're not all here because we we share the same nationality or ethnic background. Now, we're going to be drawn to groups like that, just that's how humans operate. But Paul makes it very clear that, you know, what bonds us as a family. And and he's, I think he's also very clear that this this Jesus that we have in common is such a glue for us that it's even thicker than human blood, that you can feel closer to your brothers and sisters in Christ than you can your own brother or sister. So Paul is really, really, you know, keen on what it means to to have the 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 bond of Christ between us. And so that's why he's going to say, I came to know nothing among you except Jesus. That is going to bond them and make them a really, you know, community of love. That's what Jesus is asking churches to be. Big, small, medium, to be communities of love based on Jesus. It's interesting in as the Episcopal Church and really as all of the churches are going through like downsizing or rightsizing these days. There's no shortage of people wanting to be church consultants, right? Tell you how to get your church growing, right? Get people in the door. And and the number one advice that always stays with me is if you want your church to grow, the most important thing your pastor could do is pray more. Is to is to be more rooted in Jesus, is to be more grounded, because Jesus is the one that pulls the church together. And and if your leadership is not grounded in 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 Jesus, then what are you, a social service agency? You know, a sorority or fraternity? No, we are here because of these very strong words of Paul in verse two here. Is I decided to know nothing among you except Jesus Christ and him crucified. Verse three, I came to you in weakness and in fear and in much trembling. I loved the way Eugene Peterson put it. We'll skip over there. I deliberately kept it plain and simple. First, Jesus and who he is, and then what he did. I was unsure of how to go about this, and I felt totally inadequate. That is a great description of how all pastors feel on Sunday mornings. Feel totally inadequate if you're doing it right, because I mean, Jesus is is, you know, you want to just be a vessel. And so Paul, according to Peterson, says, I was scared to death, if you want the truth of it. And it's this big Paul, you know, I'm gonna grab for you. I have a years ago, my my mom gave me a a wooden. Let me share, let me stop sharing here, a wooden rendering of of a saint sheet. I don't know. Found it on some church that was abandoned here. And so this is wood right here. And and this is a, and this is, and she always, she didn't know who it was. I mean, this is just like my mom. She'll give me artwork and nice things that are quite valuable. And she'll she'll give it to me. I'll say, Mom, who is this? She'll say, I have no idea. Know in scripture is that Paul is considered to have been bald. And and this, and whenever you see a saint who's bald, you are likely to have found St. Paul. So St. Paul has survived a lot. He fell off the wall in the earthquake of 94 in Los Angeles, Barbara. And so did I. And so he's glued together. And I think he's fallen off the wall since. But he will be depicted as somebody with with it with no need to get a COVID-19 haircut. So anyway, as we go back to our text here, Paul says that I was scared to death, if you want the truth of it. And so nothing I said could have impressed you or anyone else. Why? Because, you know, in and of himself, he was convinced that he didn't have anything great. But the message came through anyway. And that's what we trust, you know, that's what we trust scripture to do and the story of the gospel to do. There's I met yesterday with the bishop and our 75 other clergy in the diocese. And of course, just in every other business, people are, you know, worried, what's going to happen when things get back to normal, quote unquote? Will people who are now in the habit of not going to church, go to church? What will happen to life as we knew it? And we really have to kind of assure ourselves that this isn't our church. You know, this is God's church. And God will take care of God's church in the way God always does. It's always reforming. It's always changing. And so just relax, because, you know, we we are just vessels. And St. Paul puts that so well in these first few verses, that what's comes through him is the message of Christ. And that's what changes things. That's what turned him into a bestselling author, right? Way past his time. But I wonder what he's doing, looking down from heaven, saying, man, all these people are buying my books and my letters still. It was clearly because he opened himself up as a channel. And that's how the Holy Spirit used him. The Holy Spirit uses all of us in our daily lives. I think it's important for us to constantly affirm that in each other. When you're called to serve, you don't get to choose who you serve. You get to you, you get to serve the people who God has called you to serve. And that may queens, that may mean be more likely to mean you are going to be with the crowd that Paul describes in Corinth. You know, not many of you were of noble birth. Jesus calls who Jesus is going to call, and Jesus calls his servants to serve those whom he calls. Right? So to continue on with our reading here in the NRSV, he says then in, let's see, this is three to five, but the message came through anyway. God's spirit and God's power did it, which made it clear that your life of faith is a response to God's power, not to some fancy mental or emotional footwork by me or anyone else. So the takeaway of this in the beginning, this beginning bit here is that Paul is is very keen on the fact that what's working for you is is not my wonderful philosophy or delivery. What's working for you is that the Holy Spirit is being mediated and you're being touched by it. That's what's working. And it the credit goes to God and not me. Yeah, sure, I've been obedient. I mean, Paul will say, he's even said in some of these letters we studied, Paul will say, act like me. Right? And he means, you know, because there's a thin line between confidence and arrogance, right? And Paul always walks it. He says, act like, but act like me in this way, be a channel of the Holy Spirit. Allow God to work through you. I don't know what Paul's, you know, personal pieties were like or spiritual exercises. But we can guess that they were like Jesus's. And Jesus, of course, we know from the gospels, he spent a long time praying. He would pray all night. He would pray at the Garden of Gethsemane while everybody else fell asleep. So Paul was likely a person devoted to to deep prayer and meditation and contemplation on the scriptures. Jesus was a good Jew, which especially at that time, and you, you knew the, you knew the Bible, right? He had large chunks of it memorized. And we are well to do the same when we seek to emulate the kind of the kind of faith that he had. And so let me also take a look quickly at our other rendition here in in the in the message. And that is, let's see, but the message came through anyway, God's spirit and power did it. Okay, that was one I was just reading from. Okay, let's go back to the NRSV and let's see, six through nine. Janet, do you want to to read that one, six through nine here from the NRSV?
Yes. Yet among the mature we do speak wisdom, though it is not a wisdom of this age or of the rulers of this age who are doomed to perish. But we speak God's wisdom, secret and hidden, which God decreed before the ages for our glory. None of the rulers of this age understood this, for if they had, they would not have crucified the Lord of glory. But as it is written, what no eye has seen, nor ear heard, nor the human heart conceived, what God has prepared for those who love him.
Okay, and the first 10 will pick up that thought. Why don't you?
Oh, continue.
Yeah, just read, just, yeah, I mean, it's gonna be hard to, you know. Anyway, but yeah, go ahead and read 10 also.
Okay, well, God has prepared for those who love him. These things God has revealed to us through the Spirit, for the Spirit reaches everything, even the depths of God.
Okay, okay. What, what, what does that mean to you Bible scholars? Any comments or questions?
The Holy Spirit has revealed the the mystery, as we call it, but has given us an opportunity to accept or deny. And when we accept, we know fully who Christ was and what is being said by Paul.
Pat, why don't you go ahead and this is the message. Why don't you go ahead and read six through six through 10 here?
Nine.
Through 10 or through nine, through 10?
Through nine, I'm sorry, through nine.
Okay. We, of course, have plenty of wisdom to pass on to you once you get your feet on firm spiritual ground. But it's not popular wisdom, the fashionable wisdom of high-priced experts that will be out of date in a year or so. God's wisdom is something mysterious that goes deep into the interior of his purposes. You don't find it lying around on the surface. It's not the latest message, but more like the oldest. What God determined as the way to bring out his best in us, long before we ever arrived on the scene. The experts of our day haven't a clue about what this eternal plan is. If they had, they wouldn't have killed the master of God, designed life on a cross. That's why we have this scripture text. No one has ever seen or heard anything like this. Never so much as imagined anything quite like it. But God has arranged for those who love him. But you've seen and heard, because God by his Spirit has brought it all out into the open before you.
Whoa.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, that adds some clarity, doesn't it? So to pop back up to verse six, we, of course, have plenty of wisdom to pass on to you once you get your feet on firm spiritual ground. One of the things we want to take into account is that Paul is writing, to a degree, to a church that is in its quote unquote, spiritual infancy. And so we, I, and I, I think we can always do a better job of this as Christians. And that is by by making intentional strides towards what we call maturity. I mean, we do that as humans. Pure in in a lot of the ways that we grow. And Paul is really chiding, chiding, focusing, suggesting, edging on this for the Corinthians. And what is spiritual maturity? Spiritual maturity is 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 growth in the areas of the spiritual gifts. Love, joy, peace, patience, goodness, kindness, self-control. It's, as you know, I regularly compare this to what it means to be physically mature. Well, when you're, when you're not physically mature, when you're a little baby, it's all about me. And then when you grow up, it's all about somebody else. So that when you're like in your senior years, you're giving all your stuff away. You know, you're understanding that, you know, this is everything that we have was a gift. And yes, I am enjoying it. And yes, I enjoyed it. But, you know, there ain't no luggage rack on a hearse. And it's time that we give it away and that we understand that that's what maturity is. Some of us never reach maturity. You know, we know people who still, you know, are, you know, living as kids. And it's all about them. And the guy, and it may be, and there's probably a side of each one of us that's like that. But Paul calls us to maturity. And what's that mean, thinking of others? Thinking of others first, what are, what are the ways that we can cultivate habits of otherness in our lives? Obviously, our circle begins, you know, it begins with ourselves, and then it goes out to those closest to us, our kids and our loved ones. And then it goes out to those who may live near us, whom we may not have much relationship to, to even farther, you know, in in other parts of the world that we'll never meet. And then probably what's the farthest are our enemies. You know, Jesus said, that's true love is you're going to love your enemies. You have to pray for your enemies. Think of the person you didn't vote for. I wouldn't call them your enemy, but I would say that those are the people we have to love. Because I don't think in our circle that anybody here hates anybody. I don't know that for sure. But most people, most Christians I know, don't necessarily hate somebody. They strongly disagree. They don't, they don't maybe call them an enemy. But they would certainly not, you know, have much in common and even be viscerally opposed to a lot of the things they stand for. This is who we're supposed to love, right? Jesus said, you need to go one further. And so this is when we get the idea of maturity. Maturity is actually being able to love your, love your neighbor. And the most mature Christians I know talk about their political opponents with with respect. They talk about them with dignity. Jesus says, we need to love everybody. That includes especially your enemies. And that means you can't deride them. That means you can't make fun of them. That means you can't insult them or, you know, and so these are very personal things that we have to grapple with when we talk about maturity in Christ. Because the more mature we are, the more we have to give of ourselves, the more to serve other people. And, you know, Jesus, I always like to say, Jesus leaves us in four places. Jesus leads to places of discomfort, inconvenience, danger and unpopularity. That's, that's the, that's the road. And the the beauty of that road is that we don't walk that road alone. We walk that road with Jesus. Because Jesus was unpopular. Jesus did inconvenient things, was put through great discomfort and great danger. And 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 God did not abandon him. Jesus thought God abandoned him. You know, my God, my God, why have you forsaken me? But there are a lot of erroneous thinkings that go on in our lives. I mean, I will hear, you know, people say all the time, you know, people create a great note, David, maybe you've heard this in your, in your your world of music, that somebody says, well, I'm a lousy violinist, and they're the best violinist you can think of. You know, people constantly say they're bad at it and not have a good estimation. And so we, we, we think of this with God too, and Paul will get to this, where he's constantly complimenting the saints that he's writing to. And if he's like you and me, we're like, wait a minute, am I a saint? We often can't see what other people can see and what God can see. So anyway, so Paul is going to talk about this, of course, let's see, let me share that screen again for us. And again, looking at the the message translation here is, we, of course, have plenty of wisdom to pass on to you once you get your feet on firm spiritual ground, once you grow to the next level of maturity. God is asking each of us to grow to the next level of maturity. What's that look like? What do you think it looks like? It's going to be something you probably know. What's that going to be for me to grow to the next? And and why does God want us to grow to the next place of spiritual maturity? Because every step you take, you get closer to Shalom. You get closer to peace. You get closer to contentment. You get closer to lower blood pressure, less tension, because you're closer to God. And in God is that great Shalom. When Jesus said, thy kingdom come, this was that great peace of God. That's the kingdom of God is the peace of God to come upon us that we pray all the time when we pray the Our Father. And so, but it's not the popular wisdom, the fashionable wisdom of high-priced experts that will be out of date in a year or so. God's wisdom is something mysterious that goes deep into the interior of his purposes. You don't find it lying around on the surface. It's not the latest message, right, the now and wow, but more like the oldest. What God determined as the way to bring out his best in us, long before we ever arrived on the scene. Interesting turn of phrase. The experts of our day haven't a clue about what this eternal eternal plan is. If they had, they wouldn't have killed Jesus. Or how does he put it? The master of the God-designed life on a cross. That's why we have this scripture text. And does anybody's Bible tell us exactly where that scripture text comes from? Very often.
Yes. I say sixty-four, four.
I see a sixty-four, four.
I had to Google that because even my new Oxford annotator doesn't tell me what it is.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
What no I
says it.
Yeah, it sounds like Isaiah.
Sixty-four, four.
What no I have seen nor ear heard, nor the human heart conceived, what God prepared for those who love him. So he quotes Isaiah here. Who knows it by heart. These things God has revealed to us through the Spirit, so the Spirit searches everything, even the depths of God. And Eugene Peterson will say, but you've seen and heard it, because God by his Spirit has brought it all out into the open before you. So a slight chiding here for people to to get to what 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 Paul urges for all Christian, I think what Jesus urges is maturity, a spiritual maturity. And it's hard for us to do, because spiritual maturity, many ways, goes counter-cultural. We all have this yearning deep in our hearts. We want to be accepted. We want to be liked. We want to be respected. And, you know, what does it mean for for us to do the hard lifting of of really making Jesus the dead center of our lives? What does that look like? I think we're all trying to figure that out. You know, good church people, we we are here because we yearn to be like Jesus. And we want to grow in his wisdom and in his power. What does that look like? How do we maneuver that in modern day life? You know, how do we live simply, right, as Jesus did? How do we use the gifts God gave us? Because again, when we, when we look at all that's around Uh, because again, when we, when we look at all that's around us, and I think of, uh, Kathy as a medical professional, as you used her gift as her career, um, to comfort those, you know, that's a, that's a, a very clear, well demarcated line. We look at David Stewart, who was a, a lifetime musician, who's had his works played at Carnegie Hall. Uh, and we look at the gifts he's been given and, um, the ways that God has led him to express those gifts. And it's, it, it can be very, I mean, my parents were art dealers and my mom would constantly lament, you know, what good am I doing to the kingdom of God? And I would say, well, mom, you know, if, if art has any meaning at all, uh, the meaning and the purpose of art is to brighten people's lives. It is to make life a little bit better by putting something on the wall, by having something on the table. It is to point to God. As I want to say, it was Ignatius Loyola who said, all of creation is designed to point to God. So this becomes our, uh, part of our maturing in Christ is to make sure that we always put the creator above the created thing. That the gifts and, 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 and skills that we have are constantly put to work to, uh, to, 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 are deployed, if you will, uh, to point heavenward. And in all of our careers, I mean, you know, in teaching, um, in, in, in nursing, in all of the different things that I look around at these screens of people, that the things that we've done for our careers. Are meant to, um, to be used and to bring about the further work of Christ in the world. And it's to be done through growing and maturing Christ. And the, the, uh, unlike a lot of popular thinking that, oh, well, Christ wants to bring you mature. Because the mean God who wants to say, look, you need to serve me like that. Jesus is like, no, 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 I want you mature, you're going to be happier, you know? Your, life is going to be a lot easier the more you're rooted and grounded in me. And Paul sees that. And that's why we constantly see in these letters from Paul, I mean, and here to Cor- Corinth, that, uh, the, the need for, for us to be rooted and grounded like him in Jesus Christ. So let's move to our next, uh, our next pericope here. It's from, uh, it's, it's, and it's from ten to thirteen. And, um, let's see, I'll ask you to read, I guess, um, why don't you read ten again to thirteen? And, uh, let me share it here. Okay. And, uh, who's next? Susan, do you want to read this bit here?
Sure.
Verse ten to thirteen, through thirteen.
Yep, got it. These things God has revealed to us through the spirit, for the spirit searches everything, even the depths of God. For what human being knows what is truly, I just lost my place, truly human, except the human spirit that is within. So also no one comprehends what is truly God's, except the spirit of God. Now we have received not the spirit of the world, but the spirit that is from God. So that we may understand the gifts bestowed on us by God. And we speak of these things in words not taught by human wisdom, but taught by the spirit. Interpreting spiritual things to those who are spiritual.
Wonderful. Okay, let's take a look at it now in, uh, the message here. Okay, ten through thirteen. Kathy Graham, you want to read that?
The spirit not content to fit, to flit around on the surface dives into the depths of God and brings out what God planned all along. Whoever knows what you're thinking and planning, except you yourself. The same with God, except that he not only knows what he is thinking, but he lets us in on it. God offers a full report on the gifts of life and salvation that he is giving us. We don't have to rely on the world's guesses and opinions. We don't have to learn this by reading books or going to school. We learn it from God, who taught us person to person through Jesus. And we're passing it on to you in the same firsthand, personal way.
Amen. That's an interesting way to conceive it. What strikes people about this particular passage?
Well, it's kind of like the beginning. Everything comes from God. It's not from the person that, you know, like Paul that wrote it or something.
I liked, I liked the line that says, he's thinking, but he lets us in on it.
Yeah. Ititalized, let's us in on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah, it, it really asks us to think a little bit about our Trinitarian theology as well, right? That, uh, um, this idea of who is God and God is Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. And, uh, well, what do you mean? You know, the, the Muslims have a huge problem with that. They're like, how can you have one God? If it's Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, that makes no sense. Yet we understand this, this divine mystery of three being related, that there, there certainly, uh, was a son who walked the earth, who now in a new heavenly body is, is still, uh, at the right hand of the Father. And that God, um, the Creator and Originator, in whom the fulness of the Godhead dwells, also includes this bit called the Spirit. Um, and the Holy Spirit is the one that is with us, came down at Pentecost with great power to prove that God is with each one of us. And so when we, you know, when we try to kind of, it, it's, it's, the, the, these things are hard to explain. And, and I always use that analogy of having the, you know, the, the thousand-piece puzzle, but only being given four hundred pieces. We know that, we know enough about it to be dangerous, right? Uh, and so, uh, the idea is that the spirit is very much with us and the spirit's around us. And I think of, um, I like to think of my grandmother when I think of the Holy Spirit, because my grandmother used, my grandmother taught me how to make risotto. My grandma was not a good cook. She would tell you she's not a good cook. My mother knows what a horrible cook she was. She's like, in fact, that she was skinny on my grandma, but the, um, uh, but my grandma never really learned to cook, but she did make risotto. A certain way of making risotto. And whenever I make risotto, I, I get the sense that my grandmother's there. It's just like we grew up cooking together. And so in that way, the spirit is with me, right? And when I, I want to walk away from the stove and I'm not, uh, I'm not, uh, stirring the dry rice with, with the oil and the onions. Because if you let it sit at that point, it'll burn. My grandma would always say, hey, you know, keep at it. If I step away, I can hear grandma's voice saying, no, get back there, keep stirring. Uh, you know, that's what you need to do. And I think that for many of us, we have had experiences where we know what the spirit of this is. We know what, um, you know, the, the spirit of a certain way of writing or a certain way of being in the world, uh, is like. And I like to think that's how the Holy Spirit is with us. It's not something that's easily definable. But it is a spirit, if you will. It's the spirit of the law. It's the spirit of, of whatever. And so I like to think that that is the spirit of God that is with us, is that, uh, that pervasive, real, very real presence that, um, very often the Holy Spirit's the one between the, you know, the, the, the good angel, the white one and the red devil. Right? The spirit is the one that's helping you figure out, was that the devil or was that, which angel was that? Um, and that's how the Holy Spirit i- is often with us. And so to, to look at, uh, this translation here, and let me share my, uh, screen once again with Peterson's. The spirit then did not content to flit around on the surface, dives into the depths of God. Of course, the spirit is God also, right? So figure that one out, right? And brings out what God planned all along. So the spirit is that aspect of God that is working in the world to do God's will, right? Uh, whoever knows what you're thinking and planning, except you yourself. Well, it's the same with God. Except that he not only knows what he's thinking, but as Susan has reminded us, he lets us in on it. God offers us a full report, gifts of life and salvation that he is giving us. In other words, God has not hidden these things, um, to humanity. But the God, God's will is for us to be informed on the things that he's doing. And the things that he's doing is communicating to us that we are not alone in the world. There is a divine creator that the Jews have been talking about way before Christianity. There's one God. They, uh, stuck out among other, uh, religions and other peoples very early on for, by insisting that there was this one God. Well, that resonated with a lot of people and that certainly resonated with, uh, with, with the, uh, the very first followers of Jesus, that this is what he's about. Is there is one God and that God is benevolent. Um, that God, God, uh, does not rejoice in, uh, doing bad to people, but rejoices when good is done. Um, that the nature of this God is one of, of benevolence. And if we want to know the nature of God, we look at Jesus. How would God act if, you know, remember those bracelets that were around WWJD, you know, what would Jesus do? Well, look at what Jesus, you know, Jesus gave us, what would God do, what Jesus did? He would be, um, obsessed with helping other people. He would be, um, very firm on being just and, and he would speak out that, uh, look, you know, you guys are religious people who are in charge. You're, you're corrupt and here's how you're corrupt. And so, you know, uh, Jesus, uh, shows us and, and, and Jesus would, in, in correcting the religious of the day, notice that's mainly who we, he, he, uh, aimed his criticisms and his preaching at was those who, uh, were the religious of the day. Um, and to say, look, y'all, it's gone south. You're corrupt. You're in it for your own gains. You're not in it for the gains of others. You're looking for the good place at the table. You should be serving at the table, right? And, and the poor and the, uh, the downtrodden are the ones that need to be at the table. Um, so, uh, Paul gives us, um, uh, Paul gives clarity in, in, uh, in, in, in his talk here about what the spirit is about and about, uh, how it fits in with our idea of God. So the same God, except, um, that he not only knows what he's thinking, but he lets us in on it. God offers a full report on the gifts of life and salvation that he is giving us. We don't have to rely on the world's guesses and opinions. We didn't learn this by reading books or going to school. We learned it from God, who taught us person to person through Jesus, and we're passing it on to you in the same firsthand, personal way. Those are dangerous words because how many cults do we know of that, oh, God told me this, right? I, I'm always shaky when I hear that and I think that's the pastor part of me. You know, again, getting back to our Anglican tri post is, uh, what does scripture say? What does the tradition say? And what does reason say? When we go to evaluating, well, did God really tell you this, you know? Uh, before somebody's ordained in the Episcopal Church, they need to, uh, feel a call from God. And they need to go to the bishop and say, I feel called from God. And the bishop goes, good, I'm going to sit you down with, and Susan knows this well, with six other people in your parish. And for the next year, you're going to meet once a month and we're going to talk about, are you really called? And then when you're done there, we're going to sit you down with some strangers for another year and say, are you really called? Um, and discern, you know, is this from God? And so when somebody says, oh, God told me this, and, uh, they go out there and, and they don't show anybody else what they've been told. They just declare on the corner of this, uh, of the street, to the street corner, that, oh, God showed me this and I don't need anybody to be my witness. I'm not sure how healthy that is. Uh, we often want to look and evaluate at what God said to somebody by understanding. If God said it to you, then it's meant for everybody. And in light enough, what is this about? Um, you know, true religion should not, um, should not, uh, uh, make you judgmental and tell you you're in and nobody else is out. Um, it shouldn't have you, um, be, uh, violate any of the gifts of the spirit. You, it should bring you a deeper sense of love, joy, peace, patience, goodness, and kindness. It should not be about division. It should not be about judgment, as I mentioned. It should not be about, um, uh, uh, be destructive in nature. Um, and unfortunately, as we know, as we look at kind of the cults of, of, of history, we can see, oh, okay, this person said God told them. Well, that didn't work out real well, you know? So I always like to pause when we get to places, because Paul gets like that. Paul says, God told me this, and that's where we get our, uh, validation for this. We've got to be really wise. If God told you about it, then go through some discernment, tell other people. I wonder what, Kathy, your, uh, your sister's Mormon, right?
Yes.
And, and I don't know enough about the Mormon church to be any kind of critic or anything, but I do know the story of Joseph Smith. When he began, and he began with these tablets in a cave that were revealed to him. And, you know, the obvious question is, well, take it to the existing religions of the time and, and ask for evaluation. And, and I, I do look at a lot of origins of religions that haven't made it. Of course Mormonism is doing quite well and I, I'm not in a place of judgment at all to evaluate how Jesus intersects with that. Other than to say, it is a very Jesus-oriented religion. I've been to their services and Jesus is a central part of it. I don't want to go down that rabbit hole, but what I do want, want to mention is that it's really important when we say that we've heard from God, to not hide that inside. But as Paul does here, he writes in the letter, um, he certainly has, you know, a lot of these churches that he started. And, and hopefully some people who are able to speak to him about, you know, the validity to that. One of the beauties, I think, about Joel Osteen and a number of these mega church pastors, they can really preach good sermon that are touching to many, many people and bring Jesus to a lot of people. Um, the, the Achilles tendon in those evangelical, uh, churches is that there very often is a cult of personality. So that the person can rise up to a, to a degree where there, there is not proper accountability. And before you know it, there's scandal. And, um, and, and, you know, I think we all want to, um, avoid that. I think, uh, you know, the Catholic church, certainly Episcopal church, we, we try to move the priests around, right? So that there's not a lot of, um, a, a lot of these, um, uh, the temptations to, uh, you know, to, to be, to, to be, uh, fall into the cult of personality. Is that Ellen? Ellen, have you joined us? How are you? We, I can't hear you. You're muted.
Sorry. I'm new to this whole thing. Good to see everyone. I'm just catching. So I'm just catching, that's, I just want to listen. Thank you.
Perfect. Welcome, welcome. Uh, so, uh, looking at the time, uh, we've got our last, um, few verses of First Corinthians two here. And, um, I wonder if, uh, we have, uh, we have somebody new here from Kalamazoo. Uh, would you care to read this for us? Let me share it on the screen for you. We're going to read two versions, Ellen. We're studying First Corinthians, chapter two. The first, uh, uh, translation is through the New Resi Standard Version, verses fourteen through sixteen.
Those who are unspiritual do not receive the gifts of God's spirit, for they are foolishness to them and they are unable to understand them because they are spiritually discerned. Those who are spiritual discern all things and they are themselves subject to no one else's scrutiny. For who has known the mind of the Lord so as to instruct him? But we have the mind of Christ.
Okay, so that, uh, that sounds a little confusing. Let's look at an easier translation here in the message. And would you read that also? Why don't you go ahead and read fourteen through sixteen?
The unspiritual self, just as it is by nature, can't receive the gifts of God's spirit. There's no capacity for them. They seem like so much silliness. Spirit can be known only by spirit. God's spirit and our spirits in open communion. Spiritually alive, we have access to everything God's spirit is doing and can't be judged by unspiritual critics. Isaiah's question, is there anyone around who knows God's spirit? Anyone who knows what he is doing has been answered. Christ knows and we have Christ's spirit.
Amen. Isn't that?
That's easier.
Easier to, yeah. When I was in college and new to kind of Bible study, this, uh, last verse, I just clicked over to the Newerized Standard Version. We have the mind of Christ. I would say that a hundred times before I went to an exam, I never really did much better. And I think that's because what Paul's trying to say here, I think is much clearer through this translation again by Eugene Peterson. The unspiritual self, just as it is by nature, can't receive the gifts of God's spirit. There is no capacity for them. Um, and, and, and what he's, what he's, what Paul will constantly do in his letters is he will talk about the fleshly self and the spiritual self. He'll talk about the self of the earth and the self of the, of heaven, right? This dichotomy of black and white, life as we know is rarely like that. But he will talk about this idea of a spiritual self being able to be tuned into the spiritual vocabulary and the earthly self. Now, we remember Paul was an adult convert, right? Paul was saved when he was cast off the horse on the way to Damascus, right? And so, um, when that happened, uh, what, what we understand is that Paul really was preaching to a lot of people who would also become adult converts, right? Now you and me, the vast majority of Christians in the world are not adult converts. We were baptized as babies. Um, and so, uh, eighty-five percent, as I say, are, are, you know, cannot name a time when I came to know Jesus, right? What we can name is a process of knowing Christ, right? So that we were baptized as kids, uh, then at confirmation, we confirmed our faith. Uh, hopefully we were, but I mean, even me, I was like thirteen or fourteen and I didn't know it was going to confirmation, other than I got a new Hot Wheel set. For me, my confirmation would happen years later when I was at a Bible study. And I was for the first time looking at scripture and looking at this idea that I had to make an adult decision to follow Christ. I was like, whoa, wait a minute. And at the time, I mean, again, I was in high school, I was sixteen, seventeen years old. It was unpopular. Uh, it was difficult. It was, it was a, a process of coming closer to Christ. And I think Jesus calls us farther along that process every day, and even today is a part of that. Uh, Paul will write later in one of his letters, um, draw near to God and God will draw near to you. in one of his letters, draw near to God, and God will draw near to you. And so, it's in this process of drawing near that we become more, more spiritual, more of heaven, and less of on earth. And so, this dichotomy that he gets into is a repeated theme in Paul's letters. And it's easier for him, because he was talking to people who were adult converts. And he was like, ah, you guys used to run around these crazy life. Now, it's about Jesus, okay? For you and I, it's like, well, we weren't really that crazy, you know? I mean, we were raised in Christian homes with Christian people, and we didn't have, especially as we talk and we unpack what it was like to be in Corinth, because again, that was, you know, that was a, you know, another name for being really morally decadent. You know, we don't have quite the same. So, the unspiritual self, to share the screen back to Eugene Peterson's translation, is unspiritual self, and just as by nature, can't receive the gifts of God's Spirit, there's no capacity for them. Why? They haven't made room for them in their lives. They haven't said that, I want to do this. They seem to them like much silliness. I remember reading the Bible just anecdotally, before I'd really committed to knowing and accepting Christ, and it really didn't make a lot of sense. It made a lot more sense when I had really affirmed my belief in Christ and my desire to fall, to follow Christ's, you know, way in my life. And so, he's writing much more for that dichotomy. They seem like my silliness. Spirit can be known only by spirit. God's Spirit and our spirits in open communion. And this is where I think it's important for us to always remember, that when we were created, we were created by God, a benevolent, loving God, meant to embody this love throughout our lives. Now, what has happened as we've gone through life, is we have, you know, it's this idea of original sin, and Augustine would go off and kind of found and popularize that idea of Christianity. But this idea that we make that choice, and it is in ourselves, that we make choices that, and that's a very politically, it's a very kind way of putting it, because certainly, some of this sin that we have committed are things that we never admit to in this Bible study, right? We have done some nasty things. And so, when, I remember at church once, somebody pulled me apart aside in the parish hall, and they said, you know, what's this about, this original sin, this Adam and Eve, this Adam and apple, you know, you know, you need to, you know, this seems like a high, a tall tale to me. You need to go all the way back there to found sinfulness in humanity. And I was like, no, I just really basically need to go back to this morning, right? Because, you know, we can find in ourselves no shortage of sin. And so, we are capable of doing some pretty dastardly things. And so, Paul says, to get back and to share the screen here with our, with our text, when Paul says, the Spirit can, God's Spirit and our spirits in open communion, our job, I think, is to enliven and awaken the goodness that is in each one of us, okay? Because when God said, when God, you know, Genesis 1, I made you, and not only were you good, you were very good, that's in each one of us. And that process of, of rediscovering that God given life in us and love in us that was put there and made by God. But oftentimes, people will point to a newborn baby and say, you know, how can there be sin in this baby? And I'm like, I have no idea. I think that baby's perfect. I mean, I think God gave us that baby. But unfortunately, that baby, and maybe you can hear mine crying in the background, does not have to reach very far in age to make some poor choices. And to, right? There you go. Right on cue. So, so the idea is that when, when, when this letter says, God's Spirit and our Spirit in open communion, this, folks, is what we're meant to do. This is who we're meant to be. We are meant to be in full communion with Christ. We are most alive when we walk the way of love. We are most content when we walk the way of love. We are better for the world when we walk the way of love. And so, our, our desire, and Paul's desire, is for us to grow in that way. So, spiritually alive, we have access to everything God's Spirit is doing, and can't be judged by unspiritual critics. He quotes Isaiah again here. David, does your, your translation say which part of Isaiah he's quoting here?
I didn't, I didn't find this yet. No, the Oxford Bible doesn't tell me.
Okay.
Isaiah 40:13.
I'm sorry?
Isaiah 40:13.
40:13, okay. Is there anyone around who knows God's Spirit? Anyone who knows what He's doing? And it's been answered that Christ knows, and we have Christ's Spirit. And so, Paul is really affirming this body of believers, and in the, by affirming the Christ that is in them. Part of maturity is, sooner or later, handing the wheel over to the novice, right? Sooner or later, we're gonna have to drive, okay? And Paul is trying to bring these folk up into spiritual maturity with, with, you know, words like this. This is, this is where, this is where the pastor's job never ends, because it's my job to keep growing in Christ. It's my job to keep encouraging all of us to grow in Christ, because that's the answer to the life that we want to live, of love, joy, peace, patience, goodness, kindness, and self-control. And so, I'm aware of the time. I know there are about two minutes left here. I want to kind of preview, next week for us, we're gonna be on 1 Corinthians, chapter 3. It's going to, let me share a screen here one more time. So, when we get there, let's see, we have the mind of Christ. We're gonna talk about the divisions. I mean, this is where we get into the heavy lifting of Corinthians. Again, not a long chapter, 21 verses, but he's gonna talk again about maturity, and he's gonna talk about the divisions that are among them. We've read this letter before. We know that this is a new, young church, and it's looking for its footing. And division, unfortunately, is not anything new to the, the Christian church. So, can we say a prayer before we go?
Please.
The Lord be with you.
And also with you.
Let us pray. Oh, Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for this gift of 1 Corinthians, chapter 2. We thank you that, you know, just mysteriously and majestically and mystically, these words that Paul wrote of encouragement to this fledgling church in Corinth are still applicable to us, as we seek to be your church, part of your church, in a new place and in a new time. We ask that you would bless us as we go with your Spirit, that we might grow even more deeply into your vision of maturity. In the name of Jesus, we pray.
Amen.
Okay, so everybody who came for Bible study, thank you. We've been seated with some other people for our next meeting, so that's what's happening. Thank you. And join me next week, same Zoom channel, same Zoom time, same Zoom place, and we'll do 1 Corinthians 13.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Peace, peace, peace. All right. All right. And look, we've got, we've got a handful. Look, oh, there's Johnny. Hey, it's Linda Taylor. How are you, Linda?
Hi, Father Chris. I'm doing great. How about you?
Fine. Look who came to say hi.
Hey, Jack.
He says hi.
There he is. Jack? Hi, sweetie. Oh, you're getting so big.
Yeah, but I tell you what, Linda, if he could charge for the, for the smiles that he gives out. Yeah, well, we'd be able to get a high price, because he never gives them. Oh, is that his smile?
Oh, there we go.
How about that, buddy?
So cute.
I know. He's mystified by the Zoom thing. He's not sure.
Hi, Jack.
Here we go.
Hi, baby Jack.
Here we go. Yeah, there he is.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, he's getting some.
Carol. Hi, Judy.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Judy. Hi, Carol. How's everyone doing?
Hey, Lynn.
Hello.
How are you?
Good.
Hi, Lynn.
Hi, Lynn.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, Joanne.
Hi.
What's going on, Joanne? You got a lamp there.
Oh, that's nice. Sewing lamp. I'm sitting at my sewing table.
Oh, okay.
Are you still making masks?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
How many do you think you've done?
I've done 100, only 160 or so.
Only?
Well, Jan, how many, Jan, have you, can you count how many you've done, Jan?
I don't know. I think it's around 300 or so.
Oh, my.
Wow.
That's fantastic.
Kathy's got probably as many, so we're chipping away.
You're gonna keep it going?
Well, church ran out. Steve did a delivery this morning of 12 there to keep them through today. Suddenly, people are asking for masks there that they haven't before.
Wow.
So, All Saints Pontiac, we gave them 25 last week. They asked for 50 more. I'm working as I'm.
So am I.
Kathy took 100 over to St. John's yesterday.
That's fabulous.
Yeah, plus I got parishioners and people calling, so.
And Jan, as many as.
How's your supply doing at your house? How's your supply doing at your house, Father Chris?
Oh, it's doing fine.
Your Father Chris, right? Yeah.
Yeah. The, it's just fine. Thanks, Jan.
Okay, because I can drop off new ones for you, Katie, and the two kids.
I think we're doing just fine. We're not going anywhere.
I'm going to the grocery store today.
Oh, that's exciting.
And as many as I make today, Jan, I will bring them over to you tomorrow.
Okay. Tomorrow morning. Yeah, that sounds fine.
All right. Are we, is everybody here who is going to be, is going to be here? If you're not here, speak up. Here we go. We've got Carol, and Kathy, and, let's see, I would remind you, we're getting to a bigger group here. I'm gonna mute you, Joanne. Anybody who's.
Oh, yes, please.
Go ahead, and I think maybe it was just her sewing. And shall we begin with, with a word of prayer?
Yes.
The Lord be with you.
Awesome.
Awesome with you.
Let us pray. Lord Jesus, we thank you for this wonderful, loving community that you've called us to, to be a part of. And we pray, Lord, for the most vulnerable, the sick in our community. We know over 1,000 cases in Southfield. We know nearly 100 deaths in Southfield. And we pray, oh, Lord, for the grieving families, for those suffering, oh, Lord, that you would come by their sides. We pray, Lord, for your Spirit to inspire us. We understand, Lord, that we can come up with no new idea, only you can. And we desire to channel your wisdom. So, Lord, we open our hearts to you, and ask that you would speak to us and through us in the name of Jesus. Amen. Amen. All right. So, great to see everybody. Glad that you're here. I think that we all are, are somewhat knowledgeable, the fact that while this is a time of very grave danger and sickness and pestilence, that this is also a time for the church to do what the church does, which is to reach out in love and care for others. And I've been so proud to be your pastor, as we continue to have enough people and enough food to feed hundreds, literally hundreds of people who've come through there, to give out, between all your mask sewings here, hundreds and hundreds of masks to people who need them, and to continue to do the work that we're called to do. And I wanted to say that I certainly, our kind of attendance, it's hard to, I don't know, I don't know what the bishops can do about attendance during this whole thing, because it's like, what, I mean, are they YouTube views? Are they people in the live, you know, Zoom thing? I don't know how to do it. But from, from our best guestimates, we've been, we've been doing quite well. I mean, we were either at or better than we've been a year ago. So, that's gonna bring up a lot of, and some of the conversation I want to have with you, has to do with our continued use of digital media as we reach out. On Easter Sunday, we had, I mean, Janet knows, we've had some of this stuff going to Spain. I mean, we have people logging in.
Oh.
Yeah, from, from the UP, certainly, from, you know, we just had Bible study. There's a woman there from Kalamazoo, you know? The digital, you know, part here, and I think as newcomers, we need to think about how, what that footprint looks like. But, and most immediately, I wanted to just kind of ask a little check-in for people, and then I wanted to talk about the mead, before we get into this, a deeper conversation about kind of outreach. How is everybody doing? Is, and Kathy, you can give one word, you can give a paragraph. You and I checked in once today. So, Kathy, what's, what's going on with you?
Well, it was nice on Easter. I got to talk to my son in London, my son in San Diego, and my sister in Colorado Springs. So, we kind of just travel around the world.
How about you, Carol Collins?
Well, we had a good day. We had some honey baked ham, so that's always nice. And we did a lot of FaceTiming, you know, in Arizona, and Jason and Brenda, our daughter. And we had a quiet day, but it was a good day.
How about you, Johnny?
Trying to unmute myself. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Well, I've had Edith with me here, taking care of her. And we both got tested on Saturday. We went to get tested, because the hospital told that Eddie, her son, who lives, I mean, who Edith lives with, and I went and helped them, so he was positive. So, we did. We are here quarantined, and poor Brian, now he has to be quarantined too. So, you know, it's been a little challenging, but, you know, I'm trying not to be too scared, you know? I'm trying to be positive. And then, cousin Eddie, they let him out of the hospital yesterday, and today's his 75th birthday. So, I'm gonna cook some things and take it down and put in front of his house for his son to give him. But we are praying, you know, but we're hanging in there. So, I won't go for my test until, I guess, this week, the end of the week. And I have no symptoms, but I guess the doctor let me do it, because I came in contact with someone, they said, or did. Just to let you know, I would, because I was asking about what symptoms does Eddie have, because he has heart problems, he had no symptoms. I don't know where they came back with this thing. One, he was positive, the negative, the next, he was positive. So, I, we don't know what the hospital did. So, but we, we're dealing with it like he's positive, so. But we're hanging in there, people. Thank you, and pray for us.
We sure will.
Definitely.
And so, you won't find out the results of that for a few days. It's crazy that you gotta wait so long.
And you know what? And I was very impressed with the way they did it. We went on Saturday at 10 o'clock. I was in there from beginning to enter the location for like 15 minutes. Everything was done perfectly. They were very fast. It was a little painful, but I kind of knew it was coming. But, you know, and so, we, you know, I don't know, they said they'll call my doctor at the end of the week, so we'll see. And I will let you know what's going on at our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Linda Taylor?
Yes.
How are you? How was your Easter? And how's, how you doing?
Well, you know what? I have an attitude of gratitude, and my only chief complaint is, I'm just putting on too much weight. Not exercising enough.
Oh, my, the COVID-15.
The COVID-15, yep. But other than that, things are great. Kitty is still with us, believe it or not.
Oh, my gosh.
You know, she was given a death sentence towards the end of March, but with all the prayer and blessings and TLC, she just has a spirit that keeps her going. And I'm speaking of my, my 17-year-old cat that I share with my friend Brian. Kitty Taylor hyphenated Green. She is just so sweet and so lovable, but she's definitely slowing down. So, thank you for all the prayers, and it's just a matter of time. It's in God's hands. So, I'm very thankful that we've had the extra time we have, because I really thought she was gonna go four weeks ago. So, but I'm, you know, I'm in good spirits. I don't know anyone personally, other than Johnny and her friends who have had the virus. I'm, I'm very grateful. I.
I don't have the virus. Please, don't put that in.
No, 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 no. No, your relatives, I meant, not you. No, no. No, no. But things are good.
Okay, okay. Judy, how are you doing?
I'm doing well. I would say I'm.
I'm doing well. I would say I'm sort of like my GPS. I'm recalculating right now. Just trying to, trying to get through this crazy time. But yeah, I'm very grateful. Things are going well. I'm healthy. My family's healthy. The thing that keeps me going is probably friends, getting outside and trying to do something creative every day. That really fuels me. So, all is well. And I so enjoyed the Easter services despite the fact that it was virtual. It was almost like really being there, and I just, I thought it was so very well done. And then I did a little brunch for two after church, and then I had an opportunity to do some Zoom activities in the afternoon with my brother who lives in, near Traverse City, and the other one that's down in Florida. So, yep, so all is good. Hanging in.
And how about you, Jan?
I'm doing, I'm well. Family, everybody is fine. I have much to be grateful for. Easter was kind of a down day. I'm used to having family and friends for dinner. And I decided not to do any mask sewing that day. So, after stomping around the house for a while, I went back to sewing masks and I was better. And then Kathy brought over some Easter cookies, and that made our day. So, turned out to be a great day after all. I have nothing to complain about. So, holidays get depressive for me, so I just have to do something to keep positive, so.
Carry on, carry on. How about you, Joanne Second? How are you doing?
One of his kids came over and picked up masks and were able to FaceTime with them and FaceTime with Heather. We found out, though, that Leonard's cousin's grandson is on a ventilator. He's in his 20s. He's on the lowest level, I guess, with it. And then we all found out later in the afternoon that his another cousin, same family, she has it, and her husband has it too. So, they just are finding out about it. They were in Hawaii. And they were okay over there, but they think they may have picked it up on the plane coming home. I don't know. So, but our kids and grandkids are doing well. And we enjoyed the service Sunday, too. It was very nice.
Good, good, good. Lynn, how are you doing?
We're doing good. We tried to watch our mass online on Sunday, and it was real glitchy. So, we put on the services from Greater Grace Temple. Everyone enjoyed it. So, it was different for us, but we all liked it.
Oh, that's super. That's super. Is that Pastor Van or is it Pastor Ellis?
It was a bishop, something.
Bishop Ellis.
Yeah.
Bishop Ellis.
Bishop Ellis, yeah.
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 My kids really liked it, in fact, so.
Yeah, no, I think we're finding that, that the convenience, that, you know, there's a lot of things that, yeah, no communion, but.
No.
Well, good. But are you doing okay? Do you have enough food, enough toilet paper, everything?
I feel like I'm in a new job of purchasing and procurement, finding new places to find food for five adults in this house. Constant, trying to find places to get food.
Right. Where are you finding it?
Well, I found a place, Michiganfresh.com is a place you can order milk and cheese and some fruit and vegetables. It's got a $10 delivery fee, but I didn't care. Social Kitchen and Max, both are selling boxes of fruit and vegetables for $10. You do a drive-up.
Okay.
Couple times.
Yep.
I've ordered food, having trouble getting it.
Yeah.
CBS delivers quite very well. So, we've gotten like napkins and things from CBS. Oh, and my husband signed up for Boxed. Been delivering food to us, too. So, it just seems like we're always in need of something.
Well, if there's anything you need, we're sending, I just sent out somebody this morning, get groceries for for somebody in need. And so, we're sending people out to go shopping. You know, if it gets that far, let me know. We got shoppers.
Well, we can. I mean, and my husband works in Howell, where there's only 250 cases in Livingston County. So, I feel like it's okay for him to shop out there, but we don't want to go in these two, these last two weeks, we just don't want to go anywhere. So, we're just trying to avoid, you know, he has to go into work three days a week, and that's enough, going out.
Is he going 150 miles an hour?
No.
Oh, man. How about you, Carol and Gamble?
Carol and Gamble is just highly blessed, I guess. God's grace is with me. Everything is well. I haven't done that much FaceTime, but I talk to my two daughters every day. One is here and one's in Indianapolis. I'm a little concerned. Her husband is still going out to work. But all in all, I'm good. No complaints.
Okay. And let's see, and Pat Tilly, you're on with us.
Yes, and enjoying listening to how everybody is doing and very grateful to hear the good things that's happening. You know, so often it's easy to fall into that negative, but this is good conversation, and I'm glad to hear it.
Well, we're blessed to have you with us, Pat. The, let's see, so I guess normally we would count how many visitors we've had since last time. That's getting harder. I do have a role that I'll share with the vestry later. We have a vestry meeting tonight. We've been meeting every few weeks now of attendance that I mentioned is, you know, either at or above where we'd normally be. Another thing we would touch on is the front sign. Currently, the front sign says, you know, like, pray, "God be with you, pray at home," something like that. Do we want to change it at all? Has the timber of the culture, not that there are a lot of people driving by, but I'm thinking about something more like, you know, "Be not afraid, I am with you." A lot of fear out there. I think people are dog, I mean, it's more than 1,000 cases in Southfield, as I mentioned, about 100 deaths in Southfield. It's just really around our neighborhood, not great. So, what ideas might you have? I mean, you could also say, you know, join us online at so-and-so, but of course, everybody's doing that. And again, we'd like to use our sign to bless people and to encourage them.
I like the one you just mentioned, because I know a lot of people like myself, you know, whenever I pass by brother rise, I think they have one about, you know, and it just brings some joy to me. So, I think that would be perfect. That's my vote.
Yeah, the one at Marian, I think, like, "Fear not," or something like that. And I think "be not afraid" is something that we like to sing. And any, anybody else?
You just mentioned, "He is not a," be not afraid, and just adding, "He is with you always."
How about "Jesus is with you always"?
That's good.
That's good.
That's what I was gonna have you add. So, that's perfect.
I didn't hear it. Could you repeat it?
Yeah, "Be not afraid, Jesus is with us always."
I like that better than putting the word "fear" in it.
Yeah, "Be not afraid, always."
That's good.
Okay. All right, great. We will communicate that to both. The other thing is saying as mead. We have been doing perimeter cleanup around the church when we've been there and picked up probably 15 to 20 gloves from the mead, because it's the colored gloves they're wearing and not the colored gloves we're wearing. I would imagine they're probably having trouble with staff. We know that there's at least one of our members in the mead who's tested positive for the virus. I can't imagine a more scary place to be working now than a rest home. And I'm wondering what we might do to help encourage the workers there? Are there signs we could make up? Are there, you know, something from your neighbors? You know, we obviously don't want to give them something other than our best wishes. And I know, Jan, you've been in touch because you've dropped off masks. Do you have any more? I've tried emailing the director, and I haven't heard back. I've emailed the bishop. I haven't heard back. I'm scared that there's something going on there, and they just don't want to tell people about it. But that's, of course, the negative part of me.
Our neighbors across the street, I noticed a new sign in their front yard, something like, Steve just told me about it, because I hadn't gone outside to read it. Just to thank you to all the healthcare workers and first responders. I don't know, maybe we could find something like that and plaster their lawn with it. Or how about our kids, our Sunday school kids writing thank you notes or just cheerful notes for all the residents? And we could take them over in a group.
I'm not sure that taking anything in is gonna be allowed or would be good, you know, a good thing. I mean, I think we really want to keep distancing, you know, especially among that fragile population. You know, I'm not sure bringing something like that. But what was your other idea?
Yard, those yard signs I saw, I don't know where they got them. I could always find out. But just thanking healthcare workers and first responders. I don't know. You haven't heard from them to find out what they need.
Well, I mean, I knocked on the window, you know, in visiting our parishioner there, and, you know, told the healthcare workers, you know, "God bless you." And I mean, they can't open the door or anything, but just talked through the window. And, you know, I'm just thinking about way, about encouragement that we might give them. I don't know anybody who's making.
The person who called me, or I was in contact with regarding the face masks, first person was Anita.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I had just called, and that's who answered. So, maybe just calling and finding out what they need.
Does anybody know if, and Linda, you might know this, wasn't Deborah Green working there?
Yes.
Does she still work there? Do you know?
I'm not sure. I texted her on Easter Sunday, and she texted back, but she didn't say anything else other than "Happy Easter," so I don't know.
Okay.
Find out.
She, wasn't she like a receptionist or something at the front desk?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure.
Are there areas where some of the residents would be able to look out their window? And I'm not that familiar with the layout of the building, but I'm just wondering if we could put something sort of like Jan was suggesting, yard signs, or if there was like even like a walkway or something. I mean, you see, I see a lot in my neighborhood, I'm sure the rest of you do too, with just like signs, even like on the sidewalk with chalk or something. Chalk are just saying, you know, positive messages, something that.
Yeah, they probably can't see the sidewalk, but there's that area close to 12 Mile. It's kind of, I don't know how much of a public area, but I know all of the rooms have windows.
Okay.
Because there's no way you're gonna put a resident in a room without a window.
Right.
So, even if you, you know, put signs around the building, they would be able to see them. I don't know how much the residents are allowed out of their rooms at this point.
If they've tested positive, they're not allowed out.
Well, I'm just saying in general, sometimes they're, once you have a positive case, they'll kind of lock down everybody. Because you don't know who's been exposed and who might turn up positive next.
Kathy, I saw a guy, the solarium you're talking about, that you can, 12 Mile. The other day, there was, I guess, a resident there with his mask sitting there.
Okay.
Because I always kind of look when I pass by, and I did see that.
And sometimes that's the rule. If you come out of your room, you have to have a mask on.
Yeah, I know. He was sitting there, you know, with the mask on.
Yeah, it's nice, because it looks over the garden area, too.
Something like your friends at St. David's are praying for you. God, you know, again, you know, "Do not be afraid, Jesus is with us," prayers from your neighbors. How do you make those? Because I don't know of any sign makers that are open.
I have to make them yourself, unfortunately.
Yeah. Do we have the means to do that among us? You know, what would be needed, we would need. I'm thinking, did we save any of the ones that we had last time we made signs? You know, at least those metal, you know, I did that around the time of VBS, you know, "Who's my neighbor?" A bunch of those. I'd have to go to church and see, and then see if we could, you know, I mean, if I can get some signs like that, can we, I guess you'd have to write over them, essentially, put paper or put something over them. Do that. What do you think?
Do you know where they would be? Did you have any in your office, Father Chris?
I did not have any in my office, Jan, but I'm wondering, you know, we also have a number of those signs that we've used for, you know, drive-through prayer and drive-through, you know,
Oh, yeah.
You know, that are portable, card signs. And those have, you know, those are relatively standard. They're 24 by 36 is the size. And if you just had poster board that size, they will slide right in. I don't know if anybody has access to cardboard or, you know, poster board or anything, you know, that's relatively thin, like the thickness of cardboard. We use, like, paneling wood. Here I have some, but it's heavy, but, you know, just kind of use some old paint, painted over them, and.
Steve is going to church tomorrow to do his weekly backup. And I can have him check to see what kind of signs are in the boiler room. I think I have some poster board that could be reused. I'm not volunteering for the project, but I can donate the supplies.
I'd be happy to create some of the signs.
Okay.
Just letter them or whatever.
I'm gonna stop at church later today, and so I can do that checking, Jan. And then what I'll do, Judy, then, is I can pop by your house and do what I find.
Okay.
Yeah, even as I say, the 24 by 36, if that's the sign, we'll just, we'll make something work. If you're willing to kind of, you know, be creative and paint them. And I will say that Judy is quite capable of. Is that the best Easter card you've seen?
At best.
So, I'm overselling Judy's artistic ability.
I'll check to see what kind of poster board I have.
Okay, great.
And Jan, let me know if you've got, if that's gonna, what you find, just maybe text me or something, because I could certainly swing by your house and pick it up on the way to Judy's.
Yeah, we're gonna be gone as soon as I get off of this call to go grocery shopping. But I'll check before I go, Judy, and I'll let you know. And I'm also going to Kroger, and they just might have some. So, if I don't have regular poster board, do you want me to pick up some?
Why don't, we're gonna wait and see what the signs look like that we have. Yeah, and when are you going shopping? Just soon, shortly?
Well, I'm hoping this call isn't gonna be much longer, and then we're going.
You can cut out when you like. But the, if you find something, just, you might text me and show me what you find, and then I can swing by and get it if that's what we find at church. We're looking for some signs that are encouraging in nature. Do we want to give Judy some guidance on what they might want to say?
That would be great.
We want to say, you know, be not afraid. Jesus is with us always, praying for you next door at St. David's. What do you think in the chat box if we want to type up something?
Even if you just said, know that you are loved and cared for, you know, or cared about.
That's nice.
Yeah, I think so too. We love you. Just even.
These people don't have visitors. I mean, they're more isolated than we are. And I don't know how their tech skills are as far as communicating with their family beyond a phone.
Okay, let's see. Jan has put up one. Near. We love you, praying for you, your friends at St. David's. We might also want to put something that has God in it, since we are a church. Let's see.
Keep it light and.
Yeah, uplifting. Yeah.
We're praying for you. Your time is near.
Yeah, right.
Jesus loves you and so do we. I mean, you know. Time is near. Gee, I hear so bad.
God is near and so are we.
Is there any way of recording some music periodically and playing it loud enough for the residents to hear?
They're so hard to hearing. That can be, that can be a challenge.
You'd be cranking it up to eleven.
Music always seems to cheer them up. Music is something that always brings unity, even when you're at a distance. I can get Harvey to play the piano.
Harvey the rabbit?
No, Harvey the husband.
I know.
Okay, let's see what we were going to do here. Let's see. We encouraged God is near.
That sounds almost scary though.
God is near.
He's coming to get you.
I don't think we should put anything with me or something like that, you know, you have to be careful like Kathy says.
Yeah. Yep. Spring is near and so is winter, right?
How about if I mute myself and get on the phone and call Anita or whoever's on the desk and see if there's something that they need that we could provide.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I let, you know what, let me, let me call, let me do that as the pastor, Jan, and I'll talk to the director. Because if we put signs around there, I want to make sure that, you know.
That's okay with them.
Yeah. That we've got her approval. And then.
Tell her I have two boxes of gloves that they can have.
Okay.
We've already given them.
How many in a box?
I don't know, Kathy, a hundred?
Fifty or a hundred in a box.
Size medium and size large.
Oh, okay, okay, sure. Rubber gloves, right?
Exam gloves, yeah.
Exam gloves, okay. Yeah, we love you, praying for you, your friends at St. David's. I mean, that doesn't have God in it, but it is uplifting.
Right. Okay, those are some good ideas.
Okay, and then, all right, great. So we'll touch base with them. We'll see how we can be good neighbors to our neighbors. Anything else in our, with our neighbors that we could do, I mean.
Well, you know, you can give them cookies. They can get things from the outside. The virus is not carried on things. It's carried when breath you breathe out. So you're not going to hurt it. I mean, you're not going to hurt anybody by giving them stuff.
Yeah, I.
Why don't you ask them if.
Jane, what she wants, you know, a lot of this Kathy's perception, you know, the mask does what the mask does. When you see somebody with one on, there's that, you know, oh, okay, I'm safe now kind of thing. And I wonder, by giving somebody cookies, yeah, you may not communicate it, but, you know, people back off when you see them.
I didn't.
They had more goodies on Easter there on their unit that obviously people donated to them. So ask if they would want something donated.
Yeah, ask them if it's okay to receive cards and notes for their patients, clients.
Yeah, and then if we could come, come together, find a way to do some really nice notes and drop off as many as we can. That would be good. So let me check with, let me check with Jane. So, let's see. And then the, I guess the other thing is, you know, is, and we're going to talk about this at length of the vestry tonight, is what are we going to do about the furtherance of a digital presence in in the life of our community? To what degree are, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if everybody's going to all of a sudden come back on one day? Or is there going to be people who just don't want to come back on one day for very good reason? And we have to find a suitable way for them to participate in worship. You know, and what kind of investment that's going to mean. I'm wondering what you guys are thinking as evangelists about what kind of message and means of message we should be considering as the vestry takes this conversation up a little bit more fully tonight.
I think electronic presence is going to be here forever or ongoing.
Yeah.
However, I think that will decrease Sunday. You know, it's really easy to sign on and you're, draw on a sweatshirt and sweatpants. And you also have kind of a captured audience right now because nobody's going to soccer practice. Nobody's going every place they have to go. I was, I was very happy to see the number of people who signed in for Holy Week services. Because they were available and if you make them available, people will come, but.
Right.
And hopefully they'll send money. But I think, you know, if, if we have some money someplace to invest in an infrastructure in the church that would handle electronic communication better than what we have.
Yeah, I mean, we've been dipping our feet in the water. We started last year when we bought a camera that could be used remote control. And that, that is, you know, compared that service with the ones we're putting on is very different. It's, it's going to require more technology, probably a kind of a much, you know, an upgraded kind of camera up in maybe the choir loft that you have somebody whose job it is during the service to actually be, you know, running it and be able to provide.
Handle it.
Yeah, yep, and to switch between things that are going on and there's, there's a, a learning curve and there's an investment if we're going to, you know, take that seriously. Because, yeah, I do wonder if all at once everybody comes back or they're going to trickle back. You know, just because some official says it's safe, will everybody say, oh, it's safe? And will the Ediths of the world be allowed to, you know, participate in the same way that they did before? By loving relatives or their own conscience, you know? We have to be very mindful of that. And I think of people whose connections, I mean, Delphine Pinson was there on Sunday. And boy, she was so happy to be able to see everybody and to hear your songs and, you know, and see familiar sights, right? People have. So these things mean, you know, they're full of meaning.
Father Chris?
Yeah.
This is Janie. I think, and I agree with Jan, maybe we should think about upgrading everything. Because, you know, just like nine one one, our life changed and we've never been the same. This is going to happen again. Our lives will never be the same. So I think we should maybe invest in the future because, you know, people are still going to come to church like I'm, you know. But open it to a wider audience. I think that will be, and, you know, a lot of churches are probably going to do that. And since we're already ahead of the curve, we should continue doing that.
Right.
Things are never going to be the same.
Right, 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 right.
Well, there's a good chance this is going to come back around again.
Father Chris, this is Cat Tilly. As I'm listening, I agree that technology is going to be a key factor in a lot of the churches. But I've always believed and I've heard you say that it's not so much the numbers that are present. It's the present numbers that can inspire others to be present. And I think that's going to be the greatest gift that each one of us can give. Because that's what Jesus wants. He sent us out to be disciples. And those of us who are coming and are thrilled to be together, if we can encourage others, not to be afraid, you know, we're using this, do not fear. So it's not so much the numbers that we start out with being present. It's how those numbers can be used to encourage others to be there besides on the Zoom. That's just where I'm at right now.
Okay. Okay, great. What else do we need to do evangelists in terms of you know, checking in with the people we're checking in with? Last time we spoke, there were a number of people who, the vast majority of people were very glad they were being called and included in the community. I guess the next read is, what is this? It's April fourteenth now. You know, end of April, maybe end of May, when, you know, people are going to, you know, be back to resuming things. How in touch do you feel? How connected do you feel with people? Do we need to hold off on a round of calls, do another round of calls this week, next week, et cetera? What do y'all feel? Linda?
Calling once a week. I called everybody on Easter, you know, in the evening just to say, hope your Easter's going okay.
Yeah, I've been doing once a week also. Calls or I sent every, I, I'm, everybody knows I'm into cards, so I sent everybody Easter cards. And I try to think of something a little different each week, a way to reach out and just make that connection. And I have to say, I received two very nice handwritten notes from two of the people that I've been in touch with. One was Jerry Sabrowski, wrote a really nice note. And the other was from Laura Miller, saying how much she appreciated the calls and the notes and, you know, she's, she lives alone and she said it meant a lot to her, so I'm going to keep it up.
Good, good. Linda, you were going to say something?
Yes. Do the residents at St. Anne's have phones in their rooms? And the reason I ask is if it was possible, could we get a list of names and phone numbers? And just give them a call saying, you know, we're parishioners from St. David's. We're just calling to wish you a great day and.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I will ask and see how appropriate that is, that the director feels. But because I think that's the best place to start is just call and find out what do you guys need? And with these ways of reaching out and encouraging be helpful to your work. You know, again, it's got to be tense to be there. I mean, we've all seen on the news, you know, rest home workers quitting by the droves and, you know, to find people. And, I mean, at, I think at St. Joe's Pontiac, my wife was telling me that nurses there are now on quadruple time. They're getting paid. You know, to hold on to them. Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it is what it is there. Okay, so then y'all are continuing to make calls and to keep in touch with people?
Yes.
Okay, good. That's, that's great. That's great. Okay. And I think that we'll, we'll continue to, you know, this is just such a weird time, but I do think it's a time of drawing nearer to Christ, of, of really drawing, becoming more deeply appreciative of things that we have. And that, of course, is our parish community is one of them. Reaching out appropriately to ways that we can reach out. The food pantry continues to see a lot, you know, see enough clients. There are now more than one people in there, simply because we tried doing one and it got scary for the one person who was there. So we have a couple of people there. And, and that continues to go, you know, meet a need. It's not that nobody's coming by. There. So anything else that people can think of in terms of what our community might need at this time? Even.
I need a smile from Jack.
Yeah, he's up on it here. Okay, yeah, it, the, I mean, the best thing and the best Christian thing we can do right now is stay home. Limit all that stuff. So, okay, well, good. Well, let's, let's get together in a week. And I'll look at my calendar here. It's fourteenth and, and we'll see what. Hello. How are you doing, buddy? And we'll, we'll do, we'll do at eleven AM.
The twenty-first, right, Father Chris?
Yeah, on the twenty-first.
At eleven.
There.
Okay.
You know, the bishop Bonnie has been saying that what we really should be doing, and we've been trying to do on the Facebook page, is, is, of course, posting our sermons, taking the excerpts of our sermons and putting them out. And, and actually doing, paying money to promote on social media our events. So you can also always boost a post by spending some money and getting it in front of other people. And we might try doing a strategy like that. It might be interesting to ask Megan Rehart, or one of our younger members, who's more social media conscious, to be joining us in this work. Because, you know, we, we've got a whole slew of people who are sitting home looking at screens all day. And how can, and when it's so easy to pop into a service and kind of sample, how, how might we, we do that? So I'll talk to Megan tonight at our vestry meeting and we'll, we can, can see what that might look like. But I would think that now is a time to, you know, just take a few bucks and, and see what we can do to, to drive some people to to the community. Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, the Lord be with you. Yes, pray, Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for the gifts you've gathered. And we ask, Lord, that you continue to inspire us and uphold us and, and really help us, oh, Lord, follow you more nearly through this time. We thank you, Jesus, that you are present and you continue to walk through the valley of the shadow of death. Bless Edith, bless all those in our community who are coming, who, who are scared and who, who need a special touch from you. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi to Edith.
Good luck. Thank you.
Good luck.
Yes.
Kathy, I'll drop stuff off to you in a little bit.
Okay, it's ready.
Father Chris, thank you for being our beacon of hope.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you, Linda.
I second that, Father Chris.
We love you. I'm going to kiss from.
Love you.